Like to call a meeting to order. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
I want to.
Mayor Sue McNamara.
I'm here.
And Brock McDonald.
Here.
Greg Boghossian.
Here.
And Andrew Lo.
Here.
Jeff Schweig.
Here.
Lynn Majet.
Here.
And Anora Scheller.
Here.
We have a quorum, mayor.
Okay. If you would all please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
And to the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Indivisible.
And indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
The delay. Okay. We have a couple of changes to the agenda. So one thing I would like to note is number seven, item number seven and item number, items number seven and 10A will not be on, will not discuss that tonight. We have discussed, we discovered there's a legislative correction. We need to have planning and zoning hold a public hearing regarding the zoning and then the subsequent recodification acceptance of those two items. So that, our public hearing will take place after planning and zoning. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. And then I, so basically I need a motion and a second to discuss and vote on the agenda as amended. Does that all jump up at once?
I vote to amend the agenda as proposed.
A motion to amend is made and second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. It's approved as amended. Thank you. Minutes, we, I'm looking for a motion and a second to waive the reading and accept the minutes as currently posted. I need a motion and a second, please.
I move, we accept the minutes.
Second.
Second.
Vote, please. Boys, vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Somebody's got to go first. Okay.
I didn't come to the meeting, so I didn't arrive late.
Oh, okay. You know, that was left over. We'll, we'll, can we have a motion to amend the minutes? Sorry. I need a motion to amend the minutes to reflect that Anora was not late. She was not present. Can I have a motion, someone?
A motion.
And I think Greg was here, and he was listed as absent.
Oh, we absolutely flopped some things around then.
Yeah, I used, I used last month's, and I apologize. I certainly apologize. Truly.
Okay. So we have two changes to the minutes. One to reflect that Greg was here and not absent as noted, and that Anora was not here as noted. Now, can I have a motion and a second again, please?
I'll make a motion to amend the minutes from last one.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. It's approved as amended. Thank you. Minutes, we, I'm looking for a motion and a second to waive the reading and accept the minutes as currently posted. I need a motion and a second, please.
I move, we accept the minutes.
Second?
Second.
Vote, please. Boys, vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Somebody's got to go first. Okay.
I didn't come to the meeting, so I didn't arrive late.
Oh, okay. You know, that was left over. We'll, we'll, can we have a motion to amend the minutes? Sorry. I need a motion to amend the minutes to reflect that Anora was not late. She was not present. Can I have a motion, someone?
A motion.
And I think Greg was here, and he was listed as absent.
Oh, we absolutely flopped some things around then.
Yeah, I used, I used last month's, and I apologize. I certainly apologize. Truly.
Okay. So we have two changes to the minutes. One to reflect that Greg was here and not absent as noted, and that Anora was not here as noted. Now, can I have a motion and a second again, please?
I'll make a motion to amend the minutes from last one.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. It's approved as amended. Thank you. Minutes, we, I'm looking for a motion and a second to waive the reading and accept the minutes as currently posted. I need a motion and a second, please.
I move, we accept the minutes.
Second?
Second.
Vote, please. Boys, vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Somebody's got to go first. Okay.
I didn't come to the meeting, so I didn't arrive late.
Oh, okay. You know, that was left over. We'll, we'll, can we have a motion to amend the minutes? Sorry. I need a motion to amend the minutes to reflect that Anora was not late. She was not present. Can I have a motion, someone?
A motion.
And I think Greg was here, and he was listed as absent.
Oh, we absolutely flopped some things around then.
Yeah, I used, I used last month's, and I apologize. I certainly apologize. Truly.
Okay. So we have two changes to the minutes. One to reflect that Greg was here and not absent as noted, and that Anora was not here as noted. Now, can I have a motion and a second again, please?
I'll make a motion to amend the minutes from last one.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are posted as amended. Okay, great. Okay. All right. I'm looking for any comments or notes from the general audience? Val, nothing? Okay. Then I would like to note that we have Joel Aguaray here from Republic. She's here to make a statement or make an update on Republic Services.
Yes. Again, my name is Joel Aguaray, and I am the municipal manager for Republic Services. So thank you for allowing me to be here. So part of our job, my job is for my clients is to give an industry update, just so you're all abreast of what's going on in the waste industry, not just specific to Republic Services. But that's about a 45-minute presentation, and I'm going to just take about 10 minutes. So I'm just going to hit some, hit some things that I think are more pertinent to the city, how we can relate to the city of Clarkson Valley. So just, there's no doubt that there's been some headwinds in the waste industry over the last five years. We went through China Sord, where, where China stopped being the world's importer of recycled material. That was back in '16, '17, '18-ish. And, and then on the dime, the world had to find places for all this recycled material to go. So just fast-forwarding, there's been some innovations come from that. But the one concern that still remains is that recycled contamination industry-wide is still a problem. Now, specific to the city of Clarkson Valley, your city is a pretty clean recycling community, and I know that's something you all are very proud of, and you should be. So just a little piece of information, every piece of residential recycle that comes from our, our communities, our partners, goes to Hazelwood. And every single truck that goes through there gets audited by three to five auditors physically going through it. And they develop, there's this formula that they use, and we want our municipal partners to have 15 or less percent contamination. That means what's coming in from Clarkson Valley, we want it to be 85 percent at least clean recyclable material that we can reclaim, and less than, you know, 14 percent to be contaminants, okay? So of our 47 municipal contracts, there's probably less than half that meet that. And specifically in my book of business, which I have 25, there are only 10 that are at that, and Clarkson Valley is, is one of those, that are less than 15 percent. So hats off to the community for your clean recycling. If there's any ask that I have from you all, it's just to continue recycling education. I do send out, I don't know, quarterly stuff to Michelle to post on the website, but as councilmen and women, aldermen and women, if you have any means of communicating with your residents, whether it's socially, on a social site, or you do, I don't know, Saturday board meetings or something, we ask that, that you would make, pass out flyers or ask, you know, residents just to continue to keep their clean recycling habits. Interesting fact on recycle, there's more legislative pressure on companies now to have their product, or pardon me, to have their packaging of more recyclable content. And that's very different than years past, because years past, companies make their products, and we consumers buy it, and then the responsibility all falls on us consumers to make sure, or to make sure that, that item gets recycled. And then it's the hauler's responsibility to make sure we collect it, and it gets sorted properly and reclaimed. So now, in the last couple of years, there's pressure on companies to have some skin in the game. And so Coca-Cola, a couple of years ago, actually came to Republic Services and said, you know what? Our long-term strategic plans involve making our packaging more sustainable. But there's not enough clean, I think it's plastic number two, out there for us to do that. So we started brainstorming, and so Republic Services is starting, well, has started a polymer center out in Las Vegas, Nevada. So just a little side note here, Las Vegas, Nevada has the largest recycling center in the United States. It is ours. And so out there, there's this polymer center. And so what Republic Services is doing, so just like in our community here, all the recycle that you guys place at the curb goes to a MRF, it gets sorted and reclaimed. So that, like number two plastic, instead of us selling it to a third party, we're basically like selling it to ourselves out, out in Las Vegas in that area. And that, that material gets sent to this polymer center. So like these plastics, like water bottles, Coca-Cola bottles, that plastic material, so that Coca-Cola bottle will stay a Coca-Cola bottle. Because right now, that plastic, when it gets sold, yeah, it, it may get resold, or it may get reclaimed into a water bottle, but a lot of it gets made into carpet, it gets made into clothing, textiles, which eventually lands up in the landfill. So this polymer center is like this circular idea of not letting that material get back into a landfill. So Coca-Cola actually was, is our first customer, and that's actually just started this fall. So eventually, that's going to make its way here. And so on the books right now, Indianapolis is set to open a polymer center, and that's where our, we're our number two, that goes to Hazel, in Hazelwood, our plant, that's where that material will go to. On track to be done by the end of next year. So just in a little interesting fun fact, we're the only hauler that's doing that. So that's kind of it on recycle. The other thing I wanted to talk about is green, or I shouldn't say green, being more sustainable in reducing greenhouse gases. So many of you may know, some of you may not, but all of our residential trash and recycle trucks are CNG compressed natural gas versus our diesel trucks that run like yard waste and in our commercial and industrial line of business. So we here in the Bridgeton market are already 20 percent cleaner than diesel, than most diesel trucks out there, okay? So we're already making a little bit of dent in that category. But coming down the pipes is electronic vehicles, okay? So we're about, we, meaning right here, Republic Services in Bridgeton, we're probably five years from getting electronic vehicles here. The state of Missouri doesn't have any incentives right now, so for a municipality to want to go EV, electronic vehicles, EV, it'd be awfully expensive. And so there's no incentives to help offset that cost right now, like incentives that are out in California, et cetera. But Republic Services has two markets that electronic vehicles are in. One is in Boise, and the other one is, is somewhere out in North Carolina. And we're testing the battery life, we're testing if it's hot, if it's cold, if there's 800 stops, if there's 200 stops, how to recycle those, how to recycle those batteries and things. So just a lot of testing, but they're going, but they're, but there's actually trash within Republic Services being serviced by electronic vehicles. 2008-ish, 2010-ish is when Republic Services, the Bridgeton business unit made the, invest millions and millions of dollars in the compressed natural gas fleet lot. And so that's probably why we will be one of the lowest on the total poll to get electronic vehicles, because we're already so much cleaner than some of our other business units. So anyway, I thought, I just thought that's coming down the pipes. Like it or not, everyone has their, everyone has their opinions on that. But that is being tested out there in the market.
It's approved as amended. Thank you. Minutes, we, I'm looking for a motion in a second to waive the reading and accept the minutes as currently posted. I need a motion in a second, please?
I move, we accept the minutes.
Second?
Second.
Vote, please. Boys, vote?
Aye.
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 Somebody's gotta go first. Okay.
I didn't come to the meeting, so I didn't arrive late.
Oh, okay. You know, that was left over. We'll, we'll, um, can we have a motion to amend the minutes? Sorry, I need a motion to amend the minutes to reflect that Anora was not late, she was not present. Can I have a motion, someone?
A motion.
And I think Greg was here, and he was listed as absent.
Oh, we absolutely flopped some things around then.
Yeah, I used, I used last month's, and I apologize. I certainly apologize, truly.
Okay, so we have two changes to the minutes, one to reflect that Greg was here and not absent, as noted, and that Anora was not here, as noted. Now, can I have a motion in a second again, please?
I'll make a motion to amend the minutes from last one.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Minutes are posted as amended. Okay, Greg. Okay, um, all right, I'm looking for any comments or notes from the general audience? Val, nothing? Okay, then I would like to note that we have Joel Aguaray here from Republic. She's here to make a statement or make an update on Republic Services.
Yes, again, my name is Joel Aguaray, and I am the Municipal Manager for Republic Services. So, thank you for allowing me to be here. So, part of our job, my job, is for my clients is to give an industry update, just so you're all abreast of what's going on in the waste industry, not just specific to Republic Services. Uh, but that's about a forty-five minute presentation, and I'm gonna just take about ten minutes, so I'm just gonna hit some, hit some things that I think are more pertinent to the city, how we can relate to the city of Clarkson Valley. Um, so, just, there's no doubt that there's been some headwinds in the waste industry over the last five years. We've went through China Sword, where, where China stopped being the world's importer of recycled material. That was back in sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-ish, and, um, and then on the dime, the world had to find places uh, for all this recycled material to go. So, just fast forwarding, um, there's been some innovations come from that, uh, but the one concern that still remains is that recycled contamination industry-wide is still a problem. Now, specific to the city of Clarkson Valley, um, your city is a pretty clean recycling community, and I know that's something you all are very proud of, and you should be. So, just a little piece of information, um, every piece of residential recycle that comes from our, our communities, our partners, goes to Hazelwood. And every single truck that goes through there gets audited by three to five auditors physically going through it. And they develop, um, there's this formula that they use, and we want our municipal partners to have fifteen or less percent contamination. That means, what's coming in from Clarkson Valley, we want it to be eighty-five percent at least clean recyclable material that we can reclaim, and less than, you know, fourteen percent to be contaminants, okay? So, um, of our forty-seven municipal contracts, there's probably less than half that meet that. And specifically in my book of business, which I have twenty-five, there are only ten that are at that, and Clarkson Valley is, is one of those, that are less than fifteen percent. So, hats off to the community for your clean recycling. Um, if there's any ask that I have from you all, it's just to continue recycling education. Um, I do send out, I don't know, quarterly stuff to Michelle to post on the website, but as councilmen and women, um, aldermen and women, um, if you have any means of communicating with your residents, whether it's socially, on a social site, or you do, I don't know, Saturday ward meetings or something, uh, we ask that, that you would make, um, um, pass out flyers or ask, you know, residents just to continue to keep their clean recycling habits. Interesting fact on recycle, um, there's more legislative pressure on companies now to have their product, or pardon me, to have their packaging of more recyclable content. Um, and that's very different than years past, because years past, um, companies make their products, and we consumers buy it, and then the responsibility all falls on us consumers to make sure, or to make sure that, that item gets recycled. And then it's the hauler's responsibility to make sure we collect it, and it gets sorted properly and reclaimed. So, now, in the last couple of years, there's pressure on companies to have some skin in the game. And so, um, Coca-Cola, a couple of years ago, actually came to Republic Services and said, you know what? Our long-term strategic, uh, plans involve making our packaging more sustainable. Uh, but there's not enough clean, I think it's plastic number two, out there for us to do that. So, we started brainstorming, and so Republic Services is starting, well, has started a polymer center out in Las Vegas, Nevada. So, just a little side note here, Las Vegas, Nevada, has the largest recycling center in the United States. It is ours. And so, out there, there's this polymer center. And so, what Republic Services is doing, so just like in our community here, all the recycle that you guys, um, um, place at the curb goes to a MRF. It gets sorted and reclaimed. So, that, like, number two plastic, instead of us selling it to a third party, we're basically like selling it to ourselves out, out in Las Vegas in that area. And that, that material gets sent to this polymer center. So, like, these plastics, like water bottles, Coca-Cola bottles, that plastic material, so, um, that Coca-Cola bottle will stay a Coca-Cola bottle. Because right now, that plastic, when it gets sold, yeah, it, it may get resold, or it may get reclaimed into a water bottle, but a lot of it gets made into carpet, it gets made into clothing, textiles, which eventually lands up in the landfill. So, this polymer center is like this circular idea of not letting that material get back into a landfill. So, Coca-Cola actually was, is our first customer, and that's actually just started this fall. So, eventually, that's gonna make its way here. And so, on the books right now, Indianapolis is set to open a polymer center. Um, and that's where our, where our number two, that goes to Hazel, ours, in Hazelwood, our plant, that's where that material will go to, um, on track to be done by the end of next year. So, just in a little interesting fun fact, we're the only hauler that's doing that. Um, uh, so that's kind of it on recycle. The other thing I wanted to talk about is, um, green, or I shouldn't say green, being more, um, sustainable in reducing greenhouse gases. So, many of you may know, some of you may not, but all of our residential trash and recycle trucks are CNG compressed natural gas versus our diesel trucks that run like yard waste and in our commercial and industrial line of business. So, we here in the Bridgeton, um, market are already twenty percent cleaner than diesel, than most diesel trucks out there, okay? So, we're already making a little bit of dent in that category. Um, but coming down the pipes is electronic vehicles, okay? So, we're about, we, meaning right here, Republic Services in Bridgeton, we're probably five years from getting electronic vehicles here. The state of Missouri doesn't have any, um, incentives right now. So, for a municipality to wanna go EV, electronic vehicles, EV, it'd be awfully expensive. And so, there's no incentives to help offset that cost right now, like incentives that are out in California, et cetera. Um, but Republic Services has two markets that electronic vehicles are in. One is in Boise, and the other one is, is somewhere out in, um, North Carolina. And we're testing the battery life, we're testing if it's hot, if it's cold, if there's eight hundred stops, if there's two hundred stops, um, uh, how to recycle those, how to recycle those batteries and think, so just a lot of testing. But they're go, but they're, but there's actually trash within Republic Services being serviced by electronic vehicles. Um, two thousand eight-ish, two thousand ten-ish is when Republic Services, the Bridgeton Business Unit, made the, invest millions and millions of dollars in the, um, compressed natural gas fleet lot. And so, that's probably why we will be one of the lowest on the total poll to get electronic vehicles, because we're already so much cleaner than some of our other business units. Um, so anyway, I thought, I just thought that's coming down the pipes. Like it or not, everyone has their, everyone has their opinions on that, uh, but that is being tested out there in the market. And going right along with that, and then I'll wrap it up with this, is, um, I don't know if you all know this, but our land, Republic Services landfill is in Roxanna, Illinois, right across the river. And that landfill, our landfill, is one of sixty-nine landfills in Republic Services in the United States that next year is going to have a gas to, gas to energy project. Right now, they is not even bidding on opportunities right now, because they can't find drivers, because they can't get trucks. Um, right now, the lead time for, for capital for a truck, um, not only is it about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but it's about twelve to eighteen months. So, if you like your hauler, if your service is good, um, best advice is to stay with them. Um, but if you're not happy with your hauler and you have to go out to bid, know that it's gonna be hard for another hauler to come in and get that equipment. So, you guys are locked up with Republic Services, thank you very much, for another couple of years. Um, and, and we've got good service here to your residents. Um, but if there's any questions, or you wanna have any other conversations on that type of behavior, the pricing, you know, what, what, what's going on in the market, I'd be happy to sit down in another setting uh, where there's definitely much more time, but I don't wanna take, you know, forty-five minutes here and talk about trash.
No, we, we appreciate it. So, I personally am happy with the service. You guys have done a good job in my, on my street, in my house, so anybody got any comments or concerns?
Yeah, and in any issues you wanna bring up to me.
I'd be interested to hear, um, for the rec, contamination of the recycling. What are some of the more common contaminants or the more problematic contaminants?
Um, the biggest contaminant are plastic bags. So, the myth, so plastic bags are obvious, are, are actually a recyclable item.
Are you talking about like the plastic bags you get?
Target bags?
No, the plastic ads you get like in the produce section or the grocery bags?
I guess I should say film. You know, you go get your dry cleaning in that plastic wrap, so film. That, you, your husband brings you home a bouquet of flowers in the plastic wrap, that film. Plastic bags from your Dearburgs, from your Target, garbage bags, any of that kind of film. All of that is recyclable, but it is not recyclable in a curbside single-string, uh, system, which is what, um, the Bridgeton Business Unit offers our customers. And the reason it's not an acceptable item and is the largest contaminant is because it gets caught in the gears at the recycle facility, and they get shut down for hours. So, but if you take that film, those bags, and go to Schnucks or Dearburgs, it does get recycled. They, I mean, when you take them there, they actually, most of them contract out with a company called Trex, which makes, um, decking.
Yeah, flooring, yeah, right.
Yeah, but, um, so yard waste and recycle, food waste and recycle, um, bags, and like garden hoses, those are some of the biggest contaminants.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome, yes.
Um, what about paper on plastic containers? Does, is that a problem?
Paper on plastic?
Yeah, like sometimes you have, like you get food, and it has the price, paper, price tag on it.
Like a label.
Label, is that a problem?
Um, I would think, so if you just have a plain piece of paper and there's like a label on it, is that what you're talking about?
No, I meant a plastic container, like you get donuts in a plastic containers.
Oh, um, the answer to this is, that is a recyclable material, but it's not the, really the label on it, it's the food inside that would make that item not recyclable.
So, just as long as it's clean, the paper's fine?
Yep, as clean and dry as you can get it, yep.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Okay, you guys, any other questions, any need for me to stick around tonight? All right, then I'm gonna call it a night, and, hey, happy holidays. I, uh, gave Michelle a, a box of holiday cheer to share with the staff as a thank you, um, because in my world, the Michelles of the world, i- it's, it's so valuable, and the, and to have her to go to, and the communication that you all have with your residents is not common. And so, for Michelle to be able to shoot out an email, um, or they call Michelle, Michelle calls me, and it just speeds up the process, so just thank you to Michelle and the staff you have, it's just so easy to work with.
Well, trust me, Joel, we feel the same, so, thank you.
Oh, oh, good, so happy holidays, and I have an open door policy, you need anything, you let me know.
Thanks, you too. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Have a good evening, have a good holiday to you too.
Hey, you too.
Thank you for coming. Chris, do you have a police report you'd care to share?
Mayor, uh, for the month of November, we had a hundred and fifty radio and self-initiated, uh, police assignments. We had six actual calls that required police reports or investigation, we had eight alarms. All of those are luckily not burglars, burglaries, they were false alarms. We had fifteen open garage door notifications that were left throughout the month. We had one injury, uh, accident up on Kennington that was a result of an impaired driver with a DWI. We had a couple of mailboxes, was, uh, moder, moderately injured, needed to be conveyed to the hospital, but was ultimately charged with DWI. And then up on Forest Club, we had a, a non-injury accident where a deer ran out front of the car, and there's, that deer is no longer with us, but, uh, uh, it created a lot of damage to the car, but there was no injury, lovely. We had twenty moving violations, uh, tickets that were issued, we had five non-moving violations that were issued, and, uh, twenty-five warnings and one parking violation for a total of fifty-one enforcement actions. And then that DWI was, uh, the one misdemeanor arrest that we made this month. Sadly, we had a resident pass away up on Curris Point, natural causes. We're investigating a sexual assault that occurred. A victim reported that she was picked up by a lift driver in St. Charles County and brought out here to the Mercy Building, and while they were out here, uh, sexual assault occurred, and that, that investigation is continuing. Uh, we had a disturbance at Crest, Crestview, a bunch of students on bus became involved in an altercation. And, uh, through the School Resource Officer's investigation, determined that it happened, uh, outside the city, most, most probably in the city of St. Louis. And so, once that investigation was done, we turned that over to St. Louis Family Court. And then we had one other assault at, uh, Crestview. It, uh, occurred at a school event, it was a couple of in-laws that got into it, and it was a shoving match. There were no injuries, and that's been forward to prosecution as well. So, that's it for this month.
Thank you, sir. I don't have any, does anybody have any questions for Chris?
Well, if you do, it's all in your time.
Cool. Okay, well, it's my turn. Um, I neglected to mention something under remarks, petitions, and complaints, and that's the introduction of our new building inspector, Brad Holmes, who's here with us tonight. Um, Brad, you've been what, a month, two months?
Uh, well, I'm six weeks into it.
Six weeks, okay.
I'm Mayor McNamara, so that, I'm, my name is Brad, uh, sixty-one years old, married, three stepdaughters. Uh, we live right down the street in Claymont Estates, and I'm recently retired from Creve Court, where I spent twenty-five years, six years involved before that. So, I'm, I'm bringing thirty-plus years of experience to you guys. And I gotta say, I'm, I'm happy to work with all of you, because at Creve Court, they had an ordinance, an actual law, that prohibited the building department from talking to the elected officials. Very uncomfortable. They couldn't talk to us, we couldn't talk to them. It was the weirdest thing. Not sure why they did that, but thankfully, we don't have that here.
No, we're, we're, we're sort of a small family, so.
Yeah, like, I mean, I, I extend an open invitation to all of you to call me, email me, get any questions about code enforcement, new construction, or our processes.
Well, I'll, I'll have to interject, when, um, we first got Brad's name, I did some checking myself, and, uh, I did call the folks at Creve Court, and obviously, they can't divulge a whole lot, but the one thing that they did say was, oh my gosh, if you get this guy, you are so lucky. And to date, I think he's done a, a really outstanding job, we've seen some good results. Um, he's brought some great ideas to the table, and I'm looking forward to a, a long relationship, so.
Me too.
Thank you very much, glad to have you on board. Anybody got any questions for Brad? There, we're gonna address a little piece of this going forward in a bit. Anybody, any questions? Cool, okay. Um, one thing, um, coming up, the alderman candidacy will be held shortly, so we have three gentlemen who will be filing for election or reelection, that's Lynn, Brock, and Jeff. Um, I hope you guys all plan to re-up, so look forward to working with everybody going forward. Um, due to the holiday, we're going to delay the January meeting one week, instead of the, is it the second or the third? It's the Tuesday.
Tuesday's the second.
The second, yeah, instead of January the second, it will be January the ninth. We'll get a little breather after, um, New Year's Day. Um, one thing Michelle and I have been doing is attending, uh, some of the other municipal meetings. We've attended Twin Oaks, Spenton, Town and Country, uh, who else? Another, um, one or two others.
Not Richmond Heights, but, uh.
Um, not Richmond Heights, yeah, Rock Hill.
Yeah.
Rock Hill, and, um, we've gotten some really good tips and information, and I would love to see anyone else who's interested or willing to go attend some of the next meetings. I don't think we're gonna do anything more this week, but maybe next week. So, um, I think everybody's got an agenda with the dates and nights that they meet. Um, most of the municipalities do meet twice a month, or a lot of them do on this list. Um, so there's an opportunity for a second meeting, but, uh, the first meeting seems to be the most informative. Um, we do need to schedule a working session, there will be some things that we need to discuss. One thing would be the city fee structure. Um, Brad has brought some great ideas to the board, and, uh, I'm looking forward to implementing some of those, some of the changes. Um, Greg, I know, is going to have a report on our investment income. That's something that, uh, we would need to discuss in that close, in that, uh, working session as well. Um, there's an MSD notice that has gone out to most everybody. It concerns the, uh, diagram of where MSD is going to be digging. It will go directly through West Hampton, uh, on our side of Clarkson, and Michelle just told me that it is apparently now to go, or may go across Clarkson here as well. So, that would be, that would possibly be into Clarkson Valley. If it misses the corner, it will be in Clarkson Valley. So, uh, they're have, they're holding a, a hearing on that, December thirteenth at six P.M. It'll be a Zoom meeting that you can sign up for if you're interested. Be sure and, and let Michelle know, and if you don't have this information already, she can fill you in on it. So, I plan to listen in on that myself. Um, I talked to Greg briefly this afternoon. One thing I said when I first ran for election was I wanted to hold, um, a couple of meetings with the mayor, just casual social events. I wanted to do, uh, like, have a glass of wine with the mayor, we can meet up at the club, and, um, just do a, a cash bar where people can purchase their own adult beverages. We'll have soda, wine, or soda water and coffee available, and perhaps do one in the evening and also one during the day to capture both people who are available only in the evening or only during the daytimes. So, that will be hopefully either the end of January or first of February. Um, something that Andrew mentioned some time ago that I think is a good idea is that we want to consider doing a series of photos of all of us to post in the office, so that people can identify who we are, what we look like. Those would then be distributed, I would like to post those in Stroll Magazine once a month, a little bio with who you are, where you came from, what your background is, et cetera. So, if we get some pictures, um, I would like to do that. Uh, and then we will have a closed meeting at the end of this, so there's lots of stuff to discuss there. Um, we'll go into that at the conclusion of this open meeting. And at that point, I would like to know if you guys as alder, aldermen have any reports? Anora, you wanna start?
Nothing.
No? Greg?
The, uh, project I mentioned in our last meeting, the removal of a pond, a dam, in, in War, War Three is proceeding, uh, it's very interesting to watch. And, as I mentioned, the dam was in need of repair or replacement, and the Army Corps of Engineers told the club that they would recommend instead just restoring the creek to its natural bed, which is what we're doing.
Any estimate on completion?
I, I talked to the project manager, uh, after we met, and he thinks it will be in spring.
Okay, what impact will that have going forward on the ground past where the dam currently lies with the drainage?
So, what happens now, in heavy rain, um, the lake overflowes, goes into a stilling basin, that fiddles very rapidly, and then, and then, most normally, the dry creek bed beyond it, if there's water running in it, which.
So, that water will then?
It makes its way into, uh, uh, the creeks that lead into the desert.
Okay.
But, you know, the dam and the stilling basin are not, are not really stopping any water in heavy rain.
Val, you guys good with that?
I'm not sure with what, which dam you're talking about.
It's, it's right, right in front of Green Seventeen. So, between. Between the tennis courts, Pick-up Up Course, and, um, Pearl Drive.
Is that the area right along, um, Forest Club Drive? As you're going from Clarkson to the club with, at, from the far south entrance, is that on the south side of?
So, there's a basin there, which feeds into this creek, which feeds into the lake.
Okay.
So, that's a temporary basin, it fills in a rain event and drains.
Well, I ask because in a couple of hard rains, I've seen quite a bit of standing water in that area.
But the lake is a permanent value of, well, not anymore, it's gone. And there's only ten thousand golf balls there.
And several snakes.
Ew!
Oh, isn't that the Snake Lake?
Yes.
A Snake Lake?
Mm-hmm.
Lovely. Okay, thanks, Greg. Um, Anora, did you wanna mention anything about the re-cutification that you're currently reviewing?
Uh, no, I had a couple of questions, uh, which I think were answered anyway, but, uh, for the future, we might wanna look at, uh, I know we don't have to give more than twenty-four hour notice, according to the state, but I would like the agenda out three days ahead, like our old codes had stated.
Well, and, and I, I think most of us agree, because that gives you time to review what's going on, but the problem is right now, we're struggling with a little bit of a, uh, we're a little underwater given the staffing issue.
I didn't know if it needed to be in the code, if we have to write a new code saying that for the future, like Michelle leaves, and the new person will know that she has to have the agenda out, especially on a regular scheduled meeting.
I think Patrick can address.
Yeah, I mean, basically, uh, it's best to keep the requirement of notice to the public twenty-four hours, that we can have a regular meeting, special meeting with twenty-four hours' notice. Whether or not the agenda is sent to the board, um, is a matter of business, three days out. We, that's our guideline, that's our goal. I don't think you need to codify it, but you just have a administrative policy to the city clerk that, or the city administrator, that you want the agenda out, if, when, when possible, seventy-two hours.
That's fine, yeah, 'cause the old code was, there was an ordinance that said.
Yes, said seventy-two hours.
The other thing was, was the vote, the older person being, it used to be twenty-one, now it's eighteen by state, but the state sets at least eighteen, so can you make it older? Can you make it more restrictive?
No, because it's, no, you really cannot, because that would be, um, trying to abrogate state rights, just like the voting age, it'd be trying to increase the voting age. Um, it, they supersede us on that.
Why did they change the age of an older person and not mayor?
Because, kinda like the president, you can be a member of Congress at age twenty-five, but you gotta be thirty-five to be president, and thirty to be a U.S. Senator, it just.
I'm older than eighteen.
I guess they just figure that, um, you know, with certain positions, like, you can be a state representative at a certain age, you can be governor at a certain age, and other statewide officials are older than a state representative. It's just how legislation value the, you know, the maturity, knowledge, expertise of, you know, an eighteen-year-old compared to a twenty-one-year-old, or the mayor. What's the age, is it thirty for the mayor?
I believe it's thirty, yeah. I'm older than that, too, sorry.
Yeah, I think that, uh, if I'm correct, a lot of the cities though have an older person of twenty-one.
Well, they may currently, but they may also still be looking at outdated codes, which will have to be adapted as soon as they re-cutify.
Yeah, I asked, uh, if, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
I asked, um, the codifier, why three cities did she codifies for, um, still say twenty-one, and she says they have not renewed their, their, um, their ordinances.
And she says they have not renewed their, their ordinances. So they haven't, you, you really have to pass ordinances to, to change that. And they haven't done that yet.
So do we need to change, have, pass an ordinance to change it?
It's in the code.
It's in the code. So if we pass the code, that doesn't, why didn't they do it that way?
Well, it would just happen in 2013, and I don't have an answer for that.
Okay. Well, thanks, Anora. And Anora's got a Herculean task there. There was quite a bit of information for her to go through, so I appreciate that. Thank you. And as I've said, Anora knows the codes better than any of us, I think. Brock?
Nothing this month for me.
Well, I think you helped me on some things that we'll discuss a little bit further.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't know if that was further down the.
Well, it is more fully, but you've been very helpful in looking at some logo redesigns, some logo ideas, so.
Yeah, well, Mayor McNamara and I met with one of the esteemed our teachers at Marquette High School this past week.
And I might add, Brock made that first contact with her, so thank you.
All right, you're welcome. We sat down, looked at a lot of different student designs, which I thought were rather inspired, actually. I mean, they were, did some very good work using Adobe Illustrator, which is a very nice program that you can tweak designs very quickly. And we were just sitting there at the conference table, just sort of, well, what if we do this with the design? What if we do that? Is this easy? Let's move this around. And so whatever we ultimately decide to do with a new logo for the city, it'll be, you know, a very dynamic activity, but also relatively streamlined, I think, just because of what technology affords us. And we'll be sharing what we have at some point.
And the students' talents. I was very impressed, so. Okay, thanks. Andrew?
I have two things. The first is related to a Curzmal Estates neighborhood. Jeff and I have been working through MSD. We have multiple neighbors who are consistently smelling gases, or sewer smell at least, in the exterior of their homes. Happy to say that MSD came out, flushed all the lines, and resealed all the covers. So we'll see if that sticks. We've had no complaints.
Nope.
In the three weeks since then.
Did they have, was there, were there more comments during the summer as opposed to now when it's colder?
There was. That's, that's why I'm holding my breath, because it's a spring-summer.
For the next six months?
Yeah. Not literally, and I wasn't one of the ones affected, so I don't have to. But we'll see what happens in the spring. I did catch the crew when they were, when they were in the neighborhood. And I went out and talked to them, and they said, "This isn't a, this isn't a normal ticket we're working on here. This came from the MSD engineers." So I didn't, you know, fully explore that comment or where the ticket came from, but that tells me it's getting a little more attention than just someone on a customer service line opening a ticket on behalf of a customer. So the engineering department was involved. So that's good news. So that's, that's that. The second topic is in regards to the IT side of things and progress on trying to find a managed service company. So I've made contact with five different companies, met with two of them. Still trying to follow up with some others, a little disappointed at progress so far. But the one that has been pretty proactive actually came and met with Michelle and I here last Friday and wanted to see the space downstairs, up here. And we have a follow-up so they can complete a proposal as well.
So that sounds pretty thorough.
I hope so. I want to have more than one proposal, but yeah, it's, it's a good start. The secondary part of that is, you know, we have our web hosting for the website ending at the end of the year. So if we are not going to come to an agreement with an IT company before December 31st, then Brock and I will have to have some sort of stopgap to keep the website going, which isn't hard, it's just a step we wanted to avoid.
Agreed, yeah.
So.
Okay. Well, if you get any news, maybe that's something we could also add to discuss at the working session.
Sure.
So, okay. Jeff?
I have nothing to add.
Well, thanks, guys. That's a good report, so, thank you. So Patrick, you are, it's your turn.
Uh, wait.
Oh, 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 wait, Lynn. I'm sorry, our virtual councilman. I beg your pardon.
Yep. Okay, I have a couple of things to report. One, I went to the West Hampton Annual Meeting. They're one of the subdivisions that did not sign or approve the police contract. So I wanted to get the reasoning for that. And it's interesting, I was waiting till, toward the end of the meeting to bring it up, and several of the residents were complaining about the number of cars that run the stop sign at Kettington and Whitby. And then it was the next night that the DWI happened on Kettington that Chris was talking about. So a couple of things happened. So anyway, they said that they didn't understand why it was necessary at this point, after all these years, as to why they did not want to sign it. And they said they would not feel comfortable signing it without having attorney review it, and they didn't want to spend the money. I often have a meeting with them, with us, and have Patrick be available to answer any of their questions if that would help with their concerns. They're agreeable to that, so it will be up to us to schedule a meeting if we want to pursue this.
Well, I think, who was it?
Curzmal Estates, right?
Well, it wasn't Curzmal Estates. It was Dunhill. Was also interested in doing something like that. So we thought at some point in the not-too-distant future, I know Forest Hills hasn't signed either, we were thinking of scheduling a meeting where we give everybody, you know, 15 minutes, 20 minutes or so, and discuss the reasons, our needs, the repercussions of signing or not signing. And so we'll look for, we'll look to sign, to set something up as soon as possible. Probably won't be till after January at this point, though, till after the holidays.
I remember like that.
Okay. Well, they're agreeable. We just have to let them know.
Okay. Thanks, Lynn. Hang on just a second.
All right. Second thing is the cyber insurance.
No, 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 go, go ahead. Jeff, Jeff was going to make a comment. Was it about the police?
It was. I was gonna say that we had our lawyer look at it for Curzmal Estates, and he didn't have a problem with it.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if you heard that, Lynn, but Curzmal Estates had.
I did hear.
Curzmal Estates had our attorney look at it. I'm using the term "our",
Yeah.
Including myself. And he had no problem with it. So, anyway, just FYI.
Okay.
So, okay, so go ahead. I'm sorry to interrupt.
All right. All right, no problem. Second thing, cyber insurance, David Leighton from the Crane Agency has come up with two bids. One from a company called Beasley, and then the other one from Tokyo Fire and Marine. The Beasley bid is for $1,200 annually for a million dollars' worth of coverage. Also, they offer, for $2 million coverage, it'd be $1,590 a year. The Tokyo Fire and Marine wanted $1,780 for a million dollars of coverage. There's a form you have to fill out and go through a whole process. I did ask David Leighton if he could come up with a third bid for us on this. So he's working on that if we need that. I think, Patrick, don't we need three bids?
It's always best.
Yeah.
It's always best.
Will we do?
But I recommend it.
Pardon me?
It's not statually required, but I do recommend the third bid.
I think.
Okay, so we could go to do if we had to.
And one thing I've always found with getting multiple bids is you learn more about what you really need and what somebody can provide. And I think it makes you a better consumer, more educated. But I don't know.
Sure, sure.
How effective it would be in this case, so.
Yeah, I don't know how many are interested in offering to someone of our size, so that may be an issue. A lot of times, it's much larger companies that are getting cyber insurance. So anyway, I'll see what he comes up with, let you know.
Have you had any comments? I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. He's still looking to get, or he's still working on getting the professional liability insurance quotes for us. So we should have something on that soon.
Okay. Did you, just out of curiosity, had you had any conversation with David Grable about the cyber insurance?
Uh, not yet, I thought, at a point. And I did forward this to Andrew. I don't know if he received it or not.
I sure did. I haven't looked yet in depth. I got it.
Okay.
Okay. There are some questions on there. If we feel we need some additional comments from someone else, we could get him and David involved, so.
Okay.
It's, it's not too complex, the questions are asking. I think along Michelle and Andrew, we could probably get the answers we need if we decide to go forward with it.
Cool. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. And by the way, I have to get, I've got another meeting at 7:30. I have to get off then, so I will be leaving at that point.
Okay. I think you said you had a conference dinner or something to go to, business?
Yes, yes.
One thing I forgot to mention, I really want to say thank you to the state or county DOT. They, we had a request from one of our neighbors in Forest Hills Ridge, which is the little subdivision right across the street from Curzmal, from Marquette. And, you know, the problems they've had with parking there in student dismissal time. And thanks to the guys, the police department, they have been vigilant about sitting there and chasing people out. But Tom Beck, who is the HOA president, also had a good recommendation there, which was to extend the left turn on Curzmal Road, allowing traffic to go northbound, make a northbound turn onto Clarkson, thereby alleviating some of the backup that occurs on Curzmal at dismissal time. And they were out there within a day and a half. I, I couldn't believe I drove by and here's a truck putting down paint, and it was just remarkable. They did a great job, so I just wanted to point that out for whatever it's worth. So Patrick, you didn't have anything, or you do?
No, no.
Okay. Okay, in terms of unfinished business, we are still looking at the security locking system for the City Hall office, for the doors. Michelle has had several conversations with our building staff, the building maintenance staff, about what we can do to affect that. And she has three or four companies who will be coming out, excuse me, in the next few days. Two on Wednesday, one on Thursday, and somebody on Friday. And if anybody's interested in coming out and attending any of those meetings, one will be at 9:00 on Wednesday, one at 11:00, and one at 10:00 on Thursday. And then I don't know the time of the last one on Friday.
9:00.
9:00, okay. So we're getting some information about that. And was it, Greg, was it you that mentioned the security issues that you had?
So I have some business at the Webster Grove City Hall. And you go in there, like I was going to the planning and development office. It is very secure. You can't get in. The door is a path to buzz you in. And if you're doing any business there, there's a bulletproof plate glass with a little dip and a little window you can put your money in. It's very secure.
So, so again, my concern is, you know, when Michelle and/or Andrea are there late, I just would like to see a little greater, a greater level of safety. That would be good. So we'll wait and see what kind of prices we get back. I guess on to new business. So new business, item number A has been removed because of the planning and zoning, which will need to hold a public hearing prior to any voting that we would do on, on, on the recodification acceptance. So that leads us to item B, which is to discuss and pass the distribution of ARPA funds to Pleasant Valley Forest in phase two. And that would be resolution number 23-7, 17, I'm sorry. So I need a motion and a second to discuss and vote?
A motion that we pass, resolution 23-17.
A second?
Second.
Thanks, Lynn. Michelle, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Clarkson Valley, approving the distribution of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds to the Homeowners Association of Pleasant Valley Forest.
Any discussion? Nope. Silence.
What's the difference between 23-17 and 23-19?
The 17 is the first approval, essentially where we oblige the funds. 23-19 is where we're approving paying out those funds.
Okay, so the, that's why the, the amounts are different.
Well, and one is distribution, the other is dispersment, as Black mentioned.
The higher number is payment, is the title on that one. But we talked about it. We're just going to handle it two separate resolutions.
So can I call for a vote? And Michelle, would you please call roll?
Thank you, Mayor. Brock McDonald?
Yes.
Greg Begosian?
Yes.
Andrew Lowe?
I'm staying.
Jeff Schwag?
Yes.
Lynn Midgett?
Yes.
Hanora Schiller?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Thank you. Okay, next would be discuss and pass resolution 23-18. And that would be the approval of dispersment of Dunhill Farms ARPA funds. So I need a motion and a second to discuss and vote on that, please. Oh, come on, guys.
A motion that we approve, resolution 23-18.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Michelle, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Clarkson Valley, approving the payment of American Rescue Plan Act funds to the Homeowners Association of Dunhill Farm.
Any discussion? No? Michelle, will you please call a roll?
Brock McDonald?
Yes.
Hanora Schiller?
Yes.
Jeff Schwag?
Yes.
Andrew Lowe?
I'm staying.
Greg Begosian?
Yes.
Lynn Midgett?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Thank you. Next one is resolution 23-19, approval of dispersment to Pleasant Valley Forest. I need a motion and a second to discuss and vote. Will you please, someone make a motion?
I make a motion that we discuss.
Thank you. Will someone please second?
I'll second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Overwhelming silence. This is good. Michelle, will you please call a roll?
Resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Clarkson Valley, approving the payment of American Rescue Plan Act funds to the Homeowners Association of Pleasant Valley Forest.
Call a roll, please.
Andrew Lowe?
I'm staying.
Jeff Schwag?
Yes.
Lynn Midgett?
Yes.
Greg Begosian?
Yes.
Brock McDonald?
Yes.
And Hanora Schiller?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Thank you. Next on the list is we need to discuss the purchase of an iPad for the building commissioner. This is something that with Brad out on the job, one of the things that has become apparent is to eliminate the necessity that Jack used to find to go out and fill out forms and then return those to the office. And then Andrea and/or Michelle would have to transcribe all that information, file it, et cetera. The easier way to do that, given today's technology, is we've already pretty much designed a form that he can fill out easily on an iPad and hit the email field and type in the necessary addresses to whoever needs to get this. Hit send. Michelle's got it. Andrea's got it. It can be filed. The contractor has it, and the homeowner has it. It expedites the process enormously. So Andrew, I think, has been doing some. It expedites the process enormously. So, uh, Andrew, I think, has been doing some research, looking into the availability, what, what we might need, and the costs involved, so I would defer to him for the information that he might have regarding that. Do you wanna share anything with us?
Sure, thank you. Okay, um, bottom line upfront is, my recommendation is going to be, uh, the purchase of an iPad Pro inclusive of, uh, Apple Care, uh, with a fair amount of hard drive space. So, this is, this falls on the higher end of the spectrum of iPads. Um, there are iPads, iPad Pros, iPad Airs, iPad Minis. There are a number of different, uh, guts, or, you know, hardware that they're all made of. The end result of, uh, what my opinion is, is that I would prefer just to, uh, purchase the building commissioner one iPad, the best one, and be done with it, instead of buying one that might be a little bit cheaper, but then having to deal with issues, or, uh, connectivity, or, uh, can't handle um, the work that needs to be done while Brad is out in the field. Michelle, uh, sorry, uh, Sue mentioned a form. That's, uh, a part of, of what I'm sure Brad needs to do, but, but not all of it. Uh, he's gonna have to take pictures. He might want to reference architectural drawings, uh, while he's standing in the field and, and look at, you know, all right, what, what does the architect have to say about this? What does the plumber have to say about this? Those file sizes are huge, big, architectural drawings are, are big files. Um, and I don't wanna have a scenario where a city representative is out in the field and is, is trying to do things electronically and cannot, and has to say, you know, I'll get back to you. So, I, I again, bottom line upfront is, I would prefer to just purchase Brad the best equipment possible now. In line with our goals for IT, um, some of those electronic forms and how we handle, um, handle that stuff is, is still gonna be happening on the backend uh, with the IT committee policy, the use of, of Google, um, Drive and all that stuff. With that being said, I'm prepared to talk about costs a little bit, uh, and I could use a little bit of feedback on how we want to approach, 'cause there are a couple decisions to make. So-
One thing you didn't mention, it does have cellular service, what you're looking at, right?
Yes, it will have cellular service, which will mean there will be a monthly connectivity fee, right?
You, you got you, you got you Lynn, yeah, thank you. So, that is, that is one of the, one of the options. So, the base, um, the base iPad Pro with two hundred and fifty-six, uh, gigabytes of, of storage, which I think is, is plenty, because you won't leave pictures on there forever, you'll take them, put them in the file folders, whatever, but it's still a fair amount to store some things on there. And a, a bigger size, which is twelve point nine inches, uh, is thirteen hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Okay, so, let's call it fourteen hundred.
Okay.
One thing that Sue, you expressed a desire to have was Apple Care.
Yes, absolutely.
This is work equipment. Um, we're gonna have it out in the field, it's, it's gonna get some use. So, there are two options for that. Number one, we can play, pay a hundred and fifty dollars upfront for two years, which covers just about everything. Or, seven ninety-nine a month, in perpetuity, as long as you pay, you get coverage. So, the recurring monthly fee is a little bit higher than the, what you get for the two years, that cost is a little bit lower per month. I would anticipate this iPad should last longer than those two years, so, um, my recommendation would be, would be the monthly recurring. That way, we can go past the two-year mark if necessary. Next piece of this is the, uh, Wi-Fi versus cellular connectivity, as Lynn brought up. My recommendation for that is to add the cellular service, which would have to occur through either, you know, AT&amp;T, Verizon, one of the big cellular carriers. Uh, that's, in, the hardware in the fourteen hundred dollar cost is included in that. We don't want the building commissioner asking folks for their home Wi-Fi, so he can send them their application, or their approval, or, or what the we're in the backyard, we're in the driveway, we're snapping a picture in the front yard, let's give them the cell service. And that is twenty dollars a month through one of the carriers.
Okay.
Data line only, no, you know, can't call anybody from it, but.
Okay, so we're looking at practically thirty dollars a month recurring charge, and I, I am a great proponent of Apple Care. It has saved me more times than I can think of. I have a Mac, um, I use it all the time. I have found that when I have a problem, all I have to do is pick up the phone and call Apple, and it, you know, sometimes it's two hours of your life, you never get back, but the problem is solved. I've never run into anything where they could not fix it. I have had occasion where they, they actually, um, it's a long story, but they actually, I incurred some damage to my machine as a result of something they did. I got a new computer, no questions, just they turned right around and that's the one I use now. And it's, uh, a little over a year old. So, they are, I, I cannot say enough about how thoroughly they have stood behind their products for me, but that's my opinion, so.
Uh, one more piece?
Yes.
I, I'm sorry, I don't know where I see your hand. The last piece of this is, I would like to include in this, and I will make a motion to approve, uh, a hundred dollar, um, additional expense for a tough case slash keyboard of Brad's choice to protect the equipment. We can let him pick it out, but I want to kinda earmark that, a hundred dollars.
Okay. Hanora, you wanted to-
Um, is this from ARPA funds?
It could very well be. No reason it couldn't be.
Let's do that.
And I think it's money very well spent, so.
Question, 'cause I've, I did deal with all this before, can you get, who's gonna put the, usually it goes on someone's existing account.
Who's what, I'm sorry?
Usually when you, when you add the cellular, it goes on your existing account that you already have with AT&amp;T, Verizon, whoever it is. If, but the city doesn't have an account, do they?
Not, not a cell account, I don't think.
So, that's the question.
The city does not have a cell account.
I know, it's a lot of those costs could be as cheap as-
Who's our fiber?
See what I'm saying?
ATT.
Yeah, we might be able to put it on our AT, like, we have AT&amp;T for our internet in the city right now, worth looking into, but I, we might-
Let me follow up on that, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, you have to have an account to add it on to.
You're gonna have to have, have an Apple account, someone.
Well, I think that would happen with the purchase of the, the hardware.
Yeah, just have a, a city iCloud account.
You do have to have an Apple account to set it up, the iPad, originally. And you will have some other expenses, even with Apple Care, if you drop and break it, there is an expense to fix and put on that.
Yeah, there is, if you drop, there, I think they replace the screen under certain circum, most circumstances, but-
Once a year.
Yeah, yeah. Don't drop it, Brad, just don't.
I have many kids, we've had Apple since they came out, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm an Apple guy.
I got a question for you as well, but you said two fifty-six?
Yeah.
On the internal, is that the, where is that stack in terms of the smallest?
Starts at one twenty-eight.
For a, for a Pro, it's one twenty-eight, goes all the way up to a terabyte.
Two, two terabytes.
I missed the two.
Yeah, I mean, I think two fifty-six is plenty, mostly what he's gonna be adding to that iPad is photos, you can take photos forever with two fifty-six, pulling up drawings and stuff.
It's also gonna be your software runs off that, off the two fifty-six.
You'll end up with, what, one fifty-six, one ninety-six, at the end of the day, but that's still tens of thousands of pictures probably, and like the drawing and stuff, we should have all that on Google Drive for you.
Yeah.
So, that'll just be a matter of using the cell service, you know?
You guys are so smart.
Okay, so, pending any additional cost for cellular service above and beyond twenty, which is mostly what's advertised, I'm seeing a one-time cost of the iPad Pro itself for thirteen ninety-nine, and then a hundred dollars for a case, tough case. One-time cost. It sounds like Mayor McNamara, you're in favor of the recurring Apple Care, which is seven ninety-nine a month?
I would be, but it's not my vote.
And then the cost of the, of the cellular service to go along with that.
I think this would expedite what Brad does enormously. I mean, he doesn't, you're always welcome to come into the office, but this would certainly alleviate that response, required response, which, sorry, it cuts down on time spent. He doesn't have to, one of the things we paid Jack to do was drive in and drive out, so.
All right, I, I move that we approve the package as described by Andrew, complete package.
I second.
Your vote.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I would like to, um, have a vote. We take, can we take, do we need to call roll, or can we, um, oral vote?
Sounds like everyone's in favor, so.
Um, but do you want it, on the vote, before you vote, that it will be?
Dollar amount, or specifics?
That'll come out ARPA funds.
Yes.
I'll put that in your-
Okay, let's, let's-
So, I'll add that to my motion, that the, the cost to be, uh, taken out of the ARPA funds.
Second?
I second it.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Aye.
That would be a aye from Lynn, too, thank you. Excellent, thanks, guys.
Thank you all.
Okay, yeah, thanks to your, to you for your work, too, I really appreciate that. Okay, next item, uh, I have some things to pass out. As Brock mentioned, he and I have been busy, if you would, Michelle. There's one in there for you, and there's one in there for each one of you guys, and I've got my own. These are the, um, some logos that Brock and I discussed with Emily Bowder, she is the art director at Marquette. You guys may remember some twenty, thirty years ago, whenever our first logo, which is on the cover page, Clarkson Valley, the round green type with the dead tree in the middle, sorry, um, that was done by the students of Marquette, all those years ago. Today's technology, et cetera, allows them to be much more professional, they're much more sophisticated in their design techniques and, uh, perceptions. By trade, I am an art director, so I sat down with Emily one day and gave her some feelings, some thoughts and input about what we were, what we have, who we are, what we wanted to look like going forward. The first page, first couple pages are examples of some of the logos, the surrounding municipalities, we got Creve Court, Town and Country, um, Manchester, Ellisville, Wildwood, Chesterfield, and Baldwin, and Winchester and Twin Oaks. There are several different formats available, Creve Court, Town and Country, Manchester, are, and to some degree Ellisville, are all horizontal. Um, Baldwin is more of a rectangle, as is Winchester, Twin Oaks, and City of Ladue, all formed in what we call a badge style, which would be what our current logo looks like. Um, if you turn the next page, it is, and Lynn, I'm sorry, you can't be here for this, oh, he's gone, never mind. Um, page one is just some stuff that I noodled up years ago, a few months ago, and I showed them briefly to Brock and, uh, Andrew, and their reaction was, "Oh, nice, can't stand the serif type." Okay, moving right along. We have a number of logos here, designs, I'm not going to tell you, any of you, who these are from. They are from not only the students at Marquette, but also a couple of other sources. So, I want you guys to take a look at these and consider basically what you like. Some of these are, all of them have little tweaks. One of the things that, um, going forward after two A, I realize we need to include the city of, perhaps since nineteen fifty, and the state. Going around the state, I've seen many people with shirts, or jackets, or stationery, which include all of those elements. This logo needs to be something that is producible in one color or two color. Two color is always going to add an expense in reproduction costs. Our current logo is not, uh, at all adaptable to any sort of embroidery or any sort of application that's not extremely friendly to fine detail, so I want something that's going to communicate clearly who we are, what we are. So, um, two B is another version, a lighter weight version of two A, the tree is a little different, obviously. Two C refers back to one of the things that I came up originally. One of the things I liked about the tree was the hands that formed part of the branches. I don't know what you guys feel about it, but that's just an observation. Then we have a script face, two D. Uh, two, two E specifically, I like the implement of the incorporation of the tree to form one of the letters. I think that's attractive, and it's clever. Two F refers back to our original logo more directly, um, with the tree inside the circle. Three A is more of a, another more graphic tree, and I refer to, the first version is a graphic version versus a not, non-graphic version. Uh, that appears in two colors. It also has a layout, for example, of what a business card, adaptations, uh, with some minor, minor differences. The city of Missouri is in a, a more definitive script face. There's a little differential between the, um, typefaces and text. Three C is another iteration of a business card. Uh, and I would like to suggest that we will all have a business card. I have some, but for a long time, whenever I go out in the field, somebody would ask me what I do, how to get in touch with me, uh, here's my sommelier card, but that doesn't tell much about the city or how to get in touch with us. So, uh, think about that in terms of what your name is gonna look like on this business card. Four A, again, are some more graphics, simple, um, simple icons. There are some thoughts that I have about some of the layouts here that I like, and have preferences for, for which I have preferences. Four B is what a letterhead could look like, as is four C. So, any thoughts, preferences, ideas?
I have a question for Patrick. Is this the sort of thing that-
Would have a trademark?
That what?
Would have a trademark?
Well, no, that's-
Yes.
That's both, both my pay grade, but, um, is this sort of thing, something that doesn't require a vote per say, that, I mean, I appreciate Sue involving us, but really, as the mayor, would this be something she's entitled to, to pick and pull, I mean?
Well, I mean, there's nothing that code about city logo, but I think it would be wise to consult everyone and get-
Absolutely.
And form a consensus, 'cause so when the citizens, it'd be easy, if half the city doesn't like it, then, oh, well, that crazy mayor did it.
It's all our fault.
As compared to-
No, and, and, thanks Andrew, that was, that's exactly my intent in sharing all this with you guys. I want your input. I, I may be the mayor, but I'm not, I'm not the, oh yeah, there is that, I'm not the be-all and end-all.
Because, uh, Andrew did follow up on that, it's like, oh, she can pick a design, but great, she has a great design, what, what is she gonna do with it? If it, if I'm spending money to buy signs, to buy shirts, you guys are gonna have to approve the monetary part of it to implement.
To implement, yeah, to display.
If you're asking for opinions, um, looking through this, um-
And, and this might be something that, um, again, I, I would like to schedule a working session, it's gonna have, it's a very narrow window here uh, in December, that I will be, um, available a couple of days, so if it's possible, I'd like to schedule it during that timeframe. But this might be something you wanna take home, and-
So, just, just a quick reaction, um, one, looks a little busy to me, two and three look fine, four, the structures look like, uh, houses.
Yes, that's what I thought, too.
Yeah, I had the same, I had the same thought.
Well, one reason, one reason you're looking at buildings there, and I don't, I won't argue with that, was because when we initially started talking- was because when we initially started talking about this, one of the things I did, I'm much better at drawing about things, drawing things, than I am describing things often. So I just did a little line drawing with some rooftops similar to this. And to the side, I added each side, an animal, one of which was obviously a deer, because you had the rack. And first thing Greg said was, no deer. So we have no animals in this, but we do have homes and houses. So that was the direction that this design took.
Who were your indoor plumbers?
So these are all like, these are variants on variants, like each page you've got dozens of. They're just, one or maybe two parts of it are different. So I mean.
Right.
I, I like the designs in two and three.
Yeah. I mean, the, the process we went through with, I mean, I don't know about the other contacts that you spoke with about some of these other designs, but at least the, our teacher at Marquette, she's like, if you could just tell us generally, like, certain elements that you like, and certain elements that you hate, just like circle things you like, X things that you don't like. We can kind of put all everyone's thoughts together and start kind of narrowing down what direction generally to go in. And then we land on something that, you know, if the whole page you hate, strike the whole page, you know, move on.
Well, essentially, there's, there's four different, uh, including the one that I did initially. There are four different people involved in designing these. So one, two, three, and four are from different people. So in each category, there are subdesigns that if you like one direction or another, then, you know, let's consider, do we like serif type? Do you like sans serif type? You know, do we wanna include the city of Missouri since nineteen fifty? What sort of elements do you guys wanna include? And not all elements would be able, probably, to be applied in all applications. For instance, if you're embroidering a shirt or printing a jacket or whatever you use it for, I don't know that you're gonna be able to get little tiny since nineteen fifty on it. But on letterhead, business cards, and other print applications, we certainly could. Any thoughts on Missouri since nineteen fifty and city of?
I don't feel strongly necessarily about having since nineteen fifty in there, but I think the city of and Missouri, I think, are key to have. If, if there's space and it makes sense to include nineteen, since nineteen fifty, then that'd be good. But if we had to lose one thing, that's the part I'd be okay with losing, I guess, I'll say.
Anora?
Why are we voting on, why do you need a special meeting for this? It's, you cannot wait till January?
We don't need a special meeting just for this. I mentioned that we could use a working session to discuss this along with the other things we need to talk about. So if you'd like to take some time to consider this and think about it, that would be a good time to discuss it. If you don't wanna discuss it, that's your priority.
No, I was just thinking of keeping special meetings, uh, short. You know what I mean?
Yep, yep.
So if it can be discussed at a regular meeting, I think it's much better. And, uh, also, we wanna be open so people can hear what we're talking about. We have, we're being filmed, so we should talk when people can hear us.
Well, I, I don't disagree with that. So does anybody have any input, any thoughts or directions on two, three, four, one, two, three, or four?
We're having a trustee subdivision meeting tomorrow night, so I'm gonna take it along and let people see. I'll give it to Alvin. She can gather.
Okay. You guys have any other input?
Just that this is not my strong point. A lot of them look great, and I think simple is better. I like the ones that pay homage to the original one. I'm not a fan of any sort of cursive. Um, I'm not a fan of the one that changes it to a pine tree. Although, cool take, both, um, I'd rather see the same existing type of tree.
I'm kidding.
On a sweatshirt, that's fun.
I'm including, no, I, I'm including this just because it was provided, so this would not be my, my choice.
On a varsity jacket, would look awesome. On city logo.
Do you know what type of tree that is in the original logo?
It's a dead one.
It's a dead tree?
I don't know.
From the, from the branching pattern, I'd say it's an oak.
Okay. I was just wanting to make sure that we actually have this type of tree in the city.
So there are no native pines in San Luis County.
So, okay, no, that's good. This is, that's kind of input that I'm looking for. So let me ask you guys this. Do you, um, two different, stylistically, two tri, different treatments of trees? This type versus, um, you know, the, well, let's do this. What do you guys think about this one?
What number is that?
Uh, that would be number two F. Okay, right off the bat, I'm gonna pull.
Kind of busy.
I'm gonna say I don't, two F generally, I don't know if the heavily arched text design is even current today. I don't know if it would be any more current ten years from now, which is the only reason I, I lean away from.
Yeah, I don't like two F either.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree. I don't care for it either. But it's not just my choice, so that's why I'm asking you guys about it. Okay, um, so again, stylistically, do you have a preference for this type of tree versus this type of tree?
Yeah, like two A versus three A, basically, right?
Okay, so you like a, a more simplistic graphic.
That's what we're comparing, right? Two A to three A?
Yeah, yeah. Anora, Greg?
Two A, what?
Two A.
Two A and three A would be the two.
I don't like three A. I don't like those little things coming off of it.
Okay. So you prefer the more simplistic graphic styles?
Right, or otherwise no leaves at all, like we had in the past.
No, I want a wide tree.
Well, it's not as wide or dead. It was designed in the fall.
Two B is, two Bravo is another form of tree where there aren't a whole bunch of independent leaves, but it's like a hollow canopy.
Yeah. To me, that, that doesn't, that doesn't have enough weight to it. And the, the tree, to me, comes off a little cartoonish. I don't know.
Why, they're also kind of forcing the Y to be a part of the tree.
Yeah.
And it's like, it's clever.
Yeah, it works. It's, it's cute, but.
And you're like, oh, the wa, the trunk is the Y I gave, you know?
Well, that's on two A also, the trunk is the Y.
Yeah.
We don't notice it as much because the tree is there.
Yeah.
I don't know if you need the trunk of a Y. It might look better not to have the trunk as a tree.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree. I, I like two A a lot, and I would probably just have the Y standing on its own and an X, you know?
Well, how would you incorporate the tree? Then I guess that would be a direction that we could offer that to Emily.
Yeah, I mean, in theory, you can just shuffle the word valley over to the left and just let them design in a, a typical kind of trunk.
Okay.
But.
Okay, outhouses aside, I did kind of like the, um, the incorporation of the since nineteen fifty in the lower circle there. And I wouldn't be opposed to the duplicate, the, the, inca, the capturing circle outside the circular element. But, I don't know. It's just a thought there. I don't.
I think the, the one you're referencing, the bottom of, of four A, I like that incorporation of since nineteen fifty the best.
If you're gonna put something there.
Because it's gonna be a small element, no matter what. And on, and on the other ones, it's sort of like hanging out on the bottom all by itself, but in that design, it's like part of it.
Yeah.
The only other, the other observation I would make is I prefer the offset of, like, this one. The city of Clarkson is over here, Valley's over here, rather than the center stat version. I think that gets, this is a little more dynamic, so regardless of what tree we, we end up with. So what I'm hearing is you guys like something like this.
Mm-hmm.
But without incorporating the tree and the Y.
I like it as it is.
I like it as it is.
Okay. You, so you like the tree being part of the Y?
Yep.
I, I do too. So, okay, that's a, that's a good one. Um, so, okay, right now, let's go through. I got, uh, okay, one is out, correct? Okay. Two A is a possibility, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Two B, or not two B?
Oh.
Not two B. Uh, two C?
Not two B.
Two D, nope. Uh, two E, you don't like the? No pine tree?
And people can't read it because it's in cursive.
Touche. Uh, two F? Anybody, two F? No, been there, done that. Uh, okay, we got, what do we got? Three, where did three go? Okay, we got three, okay, three A. Anybody?
I'll read that one.
Yeah, it's not a no for me.
Possible, okay.
I agree.
I mean, I think anything in the three family is not a no.
Okay. Possible. Okay, and then three C and four B, et cetera, are just examples of letterhead, business cards, what have you. One thing I like about this one, regardless three C, regardless of what tree we end up with, I do like the way the element sits over here to the side by itself, and then you have the rest of the text that you need to utilize off to the right side. And that would be very adaptable to a business card or stationery. And for that matter, we can always put, you know, down at the bottom, you could run a horizontal line of text with whatever you wanted. You could take the phone number and WW it, put it down at the bottom. There's lots of different permutations of that, but, okay, those two. So what I'm hearing is no four A or yes four A?
It's not that bad. I don't like the house structures.
Okay, so.
I didn't even think of the outhouse part.
That's, I'm never gonna wash that out of my mind.
I mean, I think the idea is good, but maybe just something different to go along with the tree.
Okay.
Personally, I'm not really got that on my head either, so thank you both.
Thank you, Greg.
It was one of our favorites coming in.
Okay, so we have.
Well, they're rented outhouses.
Well, yes. So this is good. We, we got, I thank you all very much. I think we have some good direction. We like a couple that are the more simple graphic styles, but not the outhouses. And then we have the more graphic version of the, the tree, so. Okay, well, we will, Brock and I will go back to Emily with your input and, um, see what we come up with next time. So can you guys see this on a, on a business card or stationery? Or we have to get a group together, a committee, to take a look at the costs and, um, style of signs that we would put up? Because those have to be replaced. They're falling. So anybody wanna volunteer to get some prices for us?
Why don't we wait until we figure out the code, what it's going to look like first?
Okay. Well, the, the only problem with that is the shape of the logo would also help determine the size and the shape of the sign. So if we can come up with that sooner rather than later, that would be good. But, okay, I think we got some good input. Thank you all very much. Okay. Let's see, where did I leave me?
Yeah.
That's about it. Except for the special piece paper Michelle left me on audit still.
Well, we, we have, um, we dealt with the agenda issue with seventy-two hours, whatever. Uh, audit. I need a motion in a second to discuss and approve the audit as posted. Anyone wanna make a motion?
I move to approve the audit.
Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone oppose? Let's put it that way. Nope. I hear no opposition. Audit is accepted as it stands. Uh, miscellaneous, is there any notes that anybody, things, anyone wants to discuss miscellaneous discussions, elements? Nope. All right, um, in that case, we are going to adjourn to go into a closed session, so I'm going to have to ask.
You need a motion first.
All you folks to clear the room. I need a motion in a second.
You need a motion to go into close before we clear the room.
I know. A motion in a second to go into closed meeting?
Got it. I make a motion to close this portion of the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to enter the closed hearing as posted and authorized according to the MSMO six one zero dot zero two one, which authorizes a public governmental body to close a meeting in order to discuss topics relating to certain matters. And this is since section six one zero dot zero two one, paragraph three, pertaining to the discussion of personnel matters.
Excuse me for one second. Brad, would you please mind staying? We have some issues, some things we need to discuss with you as well. I'd appreciate it. Sorry. I'm sorry, Andrew. Are you done? Okay, thank you. Um, a second?
A second.
I'll second.
Anybody oppose? All in favor, say aye.
Oh, roll call vote.
I'm sorry, this is, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Roll call vote. Michelle, would you please call the roll? Thank you. Hanora, um, Hanora Schiller?
Yes.
Lynn Majet? Oh, Lynn's, Lynn's. Lynn's gone. Gone, sorry. Jev Schwag?
Yes, here.
Andrew Law?
Yes.
Greg Boghossian?
Yes.
And Brock McDonald?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the motion is accepted, is approved. We will, yes, and if anyone needs to take a break.
To return to
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Vote, ayes, nays?
Aye.
There we go.
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you. I know it's a marathon, sorry, but
You know what? We had a lot of tough stuff we went over tonight, so thank you.